Hi, and welcome to the Orlando Sentinels Editorial Board interview focusing on Orlando City Council District 6, which is a very large district that includes much of the city's southwest quadrant, including most of International Drive and Metro West. It also takes in several historic districts, including Washington Shores, Carver Shores, Richmond Heights, and others. The incumbent is Makari Burns, the CEO of Orange Blossom Health, who was first elected to the City Commission in 2019. He is being challenged by Rufus Hawkins, a businessman who has also lived in the district for a long time and has a history of civic involvement. We are going to take some time to visit with our candidates today, and I'm going to dive right in with something that was recently in the news. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to introduce our members of the editorial board who are with us today as well. Viewpoints Editor Jay Reddick and our columnist Scott Maxwell, who is an ex officio member of the board. You'll see them when they pop up on your screen. And I'd like to start with a question about the changes that Mayor Buddy Dyer outlined in his recent redo of the downtown redevelopment plan. Do you think that those address the needs that Orlando was seeing in the downtown area? And let's start with Mr. Hawkins.
Well, I did not hear all of the comments that the mayor made, but I'm sure after all of the analysis that typically goes into making those type of recommendations, I would agree with the things that were said and the plans that are in place.
Commissioner Burns, thank you.
Yes, well, good morning, and first of all, thank you for this opportunity to share and speak with you all this morning. When we talk about the state of downtown, we have to recognize that we have a vibrant city. We have the opportunity for a vibrant downtown, but we definitely have to address the violence, the gun violence, and all the crime that has happened downtown. So the new changes that Mayor Dyer announced, I'm fully on board with them. If you all remember, there was a moratorium on more nightclubs in the downtown area, and that was really focused on, one, seeing what could we do to get our hands around this, the gun violence and the shootings that were happening downtown, but also give us an opportunity to take a step back to say, what can we do, what needs to be done downtown for us to diversify the offerings? We have a lot of nightclubs, and I'm not against nightclubs because they do serve a purpose. It keeps it vibrant downtown, but also we have to have something downtown for everyone, not just our young folks who are going to the club, but we need more restaurants, more, I would love to see a jazz offering downtown. So I'm supportive of all of the development that's going to happen, the improvements to Lake Yola and all of that downtown plan. So I'm fully on board and support of the changes that Mayor Dyer mentioned in his downtown Orlando address.
Thank you, and I did have a follow-up. During your first election, Chris, you had said that you were very concerned about violence in District 6 as well. And that is something that I think that you both would like the opportunity to address separately. Can you talk about what needs to be happening in your own district as an equally important focus in this particular race?
Right. Yes, thank you for that question. One of the things that we're seeing in the city of Orlando, crime is down generally. Crime is down, but we have seen far too many gun violence, far too many senseless murders that are the results of young people with guns. So first of all, I think what we need to do is stop the flow of guns into the hands of our youth. I think back to the six-year-old child who was killed just a few weeks ago from, you know, some gang individuals shot up the wrong house. We have to stop the flow of these guns into our youth's hands. We have to recover the guns that are currently in their hands, but also we have to make significant investments into the social services, into the educational services that will give our kids more opportunities to be productive members of society. One of those things that I pushed for when I was elected was funding for the 21st Century Grant from the Department of Education. I pushed our Feminine Parks and Recreations to apply for that funding. We received it, and so now we have $500,000 a year coming to the Smith Center for STEM education for individuals who are elementary age. Because what we're finding out is elementary and middle school is when they are getting introduced into some of these criminal types of activities. The gangs are recruiting at a young age. So we have to, again, provide the resources that will give them an opportunity for upward mobility and be productive citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, same question.
Okay, yes, thank you very much for the question. And the problems of violence in our communities are particularly concerning to me because we need to, or a way to target a resolution or a beginning of a resolution to these issues. We'll be sitting down, talking to parents and community people to get their input and their buy-in for a solution. As I've walked through the communities over the last several months, that is probably the number one or number two problem that is always talked about. So a partnership with Orange County Public Schools and after-school programs and active community associations and churches in the community would help rectify these problems that exist. So there are a lot of ways to look at these issues, but you first have to start with the parents, schools, and the community. So I would be in favor of any type of funding, federal, state, or local, that would impact these issues. There were two incidents in Carver Shores over the last year that were unfortunate, and prayers go out to all the family members, but we have to tackle these problems that do exist, and I would be willing to sit down with parents, community, churches, whomever, to try to get a grip on these problems, try and rectify them.
Could I add something? Because Mr. Hawkins talked about sitting down with individuals. I wanted to speak about a couple of things that had happened. There was a shooting at Carver Middle School, and I came up with a plan, a student advocate plan, and fought for funding. And so now what we've been able to do is put additional personnel resources into these middle schools. So these are individuals that will develop relationships with the kid, kind of keep their finger on the pulse of what's happening within these schools, monitor social media, and they will be trained with de-escalation, mental health awareness, because really, there's multifactorial. And so we have to also address the mental health issues that we see in our communities. Thank you.
Okay, and we will then give Mr. Hawkins a chance to respond to that. But as I said when we started, we do ask that we not follow up on questions unless we ask.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Hawkins, would you like to shake about?
Yes, okay, so.
Respond.
Yes, many of these things are already in place, but I think the key is to talk with parents and community people about how they see these issues and what can be done about them. Because I've heard a lot of comments about these very issues, and we know schools cannot solve them alone, and the police cannot solve them alone because they still exist. So everyone has to kind of buy in on a solution to the problem. So we have to work together, get everyone's buy-in, not just certain people who exist in the community. Thank you.
I thought I might change topics here a bit. There's been a lot of discussion in this community about the best way to spend hotel taxes, which are also known as tourist development taxes. Right now, as a matter of fact, while we're recording this session, the city of Orlando is making a pitch to get about $250 million of those hotel taxes in Orange County for Amway Center for improvements to Amway. So I had a two-part question. One, can you tell me why you think that money is needed for Amway, if you do anyway? And also whether in the grand scheme of things, you believe arena improvements should be a top priority for this funding? And Mr. Hawkins, I guess we'll start with you.
Yes, I think that the money is needed because of the long-term projections of, I guess, demand for both facilities, and it would be a very positive look for the city of Orlando, and we need to go in that type of direction for the near future.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Burns. Yes, I do believe that this funding is needed for the Amway Center because we have created, under the leadership of Mayor Dyer, a, what I would call a sports destination. We are a sports destination, but with the aging facilities, that does put a risk at us being able to attract some of those major sports activities. So I'm supportive of the Amway. I'm supportive of the funding that's being discussed about the Camping Rural because I think Camping Rural does need a lot of investment if we're going to think that we're going to be able to attract the big games that we're looking for. But also I think we need to look at ways that we can also get funding for some of the other areas that we are dealing with in our city. When we talk about homelessness and affordable housing, and I know that TDT funding is not used for that, and I'm not saying that it needs to be, but we as a community have to come together and get creative about really bringing in the resources that will truly move our community and our city forward and not just focusing on the hard infrastructure. We have to focus on some of the soft infrastructure, and that's our individuals, the individuals that allow us to have a great tourism and the tourism experience that all of the visitors have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to actually follow up on that just a little bit. And Commissioner Burns, you addressed this to a point, but the TDT funds in general, I know they're being used for facilities at this point, whether that be Amway or the Convention Center. But in a broader sense, and again, Mr. Burns, you sort of addressed this, but how should TDT be used specifically beyond its current iteration? Like, what sort of exceptions could be made with that tourist development tax money specifically? Whether it be for roads or homes or otherwise? How should the TDT be specifically used? And Mr. Burns, I will start with you.
Yeah, so I'm not advocating for additional use of the TDT. I think that we have to protect the TDT and focus it on for the reason that it was, the tax was enacted is to support tourism and continue to move us and keep us on top of being a tourism destination. But what I think we need to do is work together as communities and find opportunities. So when we talk about all of the transportation issues that we have, I was supportive of the sales tax, I mean, the tax that Mayor Demings proposed that would go to address transportation, but also we have to look at other ways to address the affordable housing issues that we have. Right now, I'm working with Vivian Bryan and the Orlando Housing Authority, and we just received about $500,000 grant to do a planning that will allow us to draw down some of the federal funds that will allow us to redevelop some of our public housing. And that's what we need. We need to not just focus on this one part of money because the TDT can't solve all of the issues and all the concerns that we have as a community. So we need to protect the TDT so we can keep that tourism that provides so many jobs in our communities. But we have to think differently about how do we access and leverage other funding that will address the affordable housing issue that we have as well as homelessness, and we need to address the wages that our employees are receiving.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hawkins. How would you use the TDT funding and fund all the priorities that the city has?
Well, first of all, I think that all of the venues that the tax was proposed originally should be the first emphasis of those funds. But there are other issues in the Orange County and the city of Orlando that can be impacted by some of those terrorism dollars, such as infrastructure in District 6 that are badly needed, and other issues such as a Black History Museum possibly, if it all works for both sides. So those are things that should be looked at and discussed, and if the funds cannot be found in the tourism tax dollars, then other funds should be evaluated to look at other issues in the community also. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and actually, you brought up something that I wanted to ask you both about. Obviously, every commissioner feels that his or her district is the area of greatest need in the city, but across District 6, I'm sure you've both identified areas where there are critical infrastructure needs that are not currently being met. Can you talk about some of those priorities for District 6? And we'll start with Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, as I've walked through most communities over the last several months, I see infrastructure issues such as streets with potholes, streets with drainage problems or drainage problems within the community, bad lighting, these type issues. So these are issues that I would look at and evaluate from day one, do an overview of all the communities in District 6, especially Carver Shores, Richmond Heights, and all of these areas that are kind of left off the radar and have been left off the radar for some time now. And these are areas where people are concerned about these type of infrastructure issues and others. So these would be my priority going in, and to sit down and talk with people in the community over the first few months to kind of fan out other issues that exist and that they are concerned about, which do exist, regardless of how people look at this situation. People are concerned about several issues, infrastructurally in the community that need to be addressed and have existed for quite some time. So that would be on the top of my agenda when elected. Thank you.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, infrastructure is definitely one of the main priorities for me in my office. When I took office in 2020, I would hear from the community about the state of our roads, the state of our sidewalks, and things of that nature, the potholes that they would see. And so what I found out, and then we had Hurricane Ian that really, really highlighted some of the vulnerabilities in our streets and drainage system. So what I've been advocating for is, because what has happened in the past is you'd see a pothole, and then the city would just repair the pothole, but not addressing some of the underlying infrastructure that's causing those potholes. So what we started to see, especially in our Johnson Village area, is that there are significant underground infrastructure issues that are causing these potholes. So I'm no longer just advocating for fixing the potholes, but for fixing the underlying infrastructure issues that we have. When we talk about, I've been pushing for repairs to our sidewalks. The city 20 years ago, 20, 30 years ago, had a great tree program, but now these trees are grown so much to where they're pushing up the sidewalk. So I fought for and restarted sidewalk improvements that not only improved the sidewalks that were impacted by the trees, but also made the sidewalks 80 to 88 accessible. And that should have done, it should have happened probably 10 years ago. But see, we're still fighting for those types of infrastructure issues and concerns.
Okay, and I wanted to also ask you about the city's relationship with the Orlando Utilities Commission, including the utility storm response and its financial management. If you can give us your take on that relationship, which has at times been somewhat controversial, but I'd like to get your take on that. So Commissioner Burns, thank you.
Right, so our local utilities, I think, we benefit from the relationship that we have with OUC. And I think that relationship, as you know, Mayor Dyer sits on that board. So we have the opportunity to influence what happens, but we do need to work with them closer to ensure that the in-service, the customer, and particularly District 6, that we start to address some of the issues that we're seeing in District 6. We have high utility bills. We've had OUC to come out and do some housing assessments and offer some weatherization upgrades and things for the residents. So we need to continue to push that. But also, we need to look at the solar opportunities to ensure, and to ensure that if one of our residents gets solar, that they're able to sell it back to OUC for the amount that OUC will sell it. So I understand that right now, there's been some changes in that process. I think we need to continue to advocate for individuals who choose to get solar, but also that they truly start to reap the benefits from that investment that they made. So I think there are opportunities for us to improve that relationship, but I do think we benefit from the current relationship that we have with OUC.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hawkins, same question.
Yes, I do think that the city of Orlando and OUC should work to work out different issues and how things impact District 6 residents, and especially talking about the high utility bills in District 6 in some of the hardest hit or problem areas, and issues where you have above-ground utility wires going through, going to people's homes. There are issues where people have trees growing and limbs and branches growing on top of the utility wires going to their homes that they're very concerned about. And as they tell me, I call OUC, I call the city, I can't get any responses for anyone to come out and deal with these particular issues. So that's something that I would put on the front burner when I'm elected and try and help people resolve those particular issues. And any other issues pertaining to OUC are coming out doing electrical inspections of the homes because the utility bills are high. That's a big concern. Why they are high, I'm not in that business. So an overview needs to be done and try to help reduce issues and concerns by people in District 6. Thank you.
Okay, Orlando has a strong mayor form of government. And for Mr. Hawkins, if you can address a few times when you believe the city council should have pushed back against an initiative that Mayor Buddy Dyer was pursuing? And then I'd like to hear from Commissioner Burns on ways that he has done that during his term. So, Mr. Hawkins, if you could address the council's relationship with the mayor?
Okay, so the question was addressing any issue that the council should have pushed back from the strong mayor Buddy Dyer? I'm not familiar with any issue where the city council should have pushed back, but not saying that there were not any times, but I'm just not familiar with any.
Okay, Commissioner Burns.
Yes, well, I'm proud to be a member of the city council, and I think we benefit and enjoy a very collegial arrangement. And when there have been times of things that may have come out of the mayor's office or from other departments, what my approach has been is to meet with those departments, ask my questions, and then, you know, ask staff to work on those. One of the things that was when we were talking about the scooters and having the scooters come downtown and the ranking of those scooters, one of the things that I expressed to the mayor's staff as well as the city staff is that we had a pilot program that was operating, and we had several vendors who came alongside of us and participated in that pilot program. But then when the selection of the actual operators, one operator was selected that didn't participate in the pilot program. So I expressed my concerns with that because I didn't feel that this operator actually had the skin in the game or the true interest that's helping the city to make a good decision, but now are benefiting on the back end. So that was one of the things I did push back on, but I did express that during the council meeting. But also, prior to council meetings, we're fortunate that we get briefings on each one of the items, and during that time, we can ask the questions, express our opposition, and then offer some potential changes. So again, I think we benefit from a very collegial working city commission.
If I can just follow up to put a little bit more of a fine point on that to Chris's question. Mr. Burns, is there any vote you can recall where you were on the minority side, on the opposite side of the mayor on any issue?
Not one that I can recall as of yet.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you both so much for taking the time to be with us. And I just want to let people who are watching us know the Orlando Sentinel will be making an endorsement in this race, as it usually does. However, we encourage Orlando city voters to consider it just a starting place. Review each candidate's material that they put out and their campaign platforms. Read Ryan Gillespie's excellent coverage of this race and do your own research. Find a candidate who you believe is best qualified to represent your values and hopes for Orlando. And make sure you are ready to vote. You must be a registered voter, live within District 6, cast a ballot in this particular election, though there is also the citywide mayor election. The cutoff to register is October 10, which is coming up quickly. And everybody who wants an absentee ballot or mail ballot will have to request those new, again, because all requests have expired. Early voting will be taking place throughout the city, and then, of course, there will be Election Day on November 7. And at this point, we would like to invite both of our candidates to make a brief closing statement, starting with Mr. Hawkins. Keep that to about two minutes. And tell voters why they think they should consider you in this race, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, to the voters of District 6, I am asking for your vote on November 7 because I feel and I know that I am a concerned candidate who lived in this district 99% of my life, and I've been out there with you on the streets, talking about the issues, listening to your concerns, walking the neighborhoods, in your homes, sitting down, and going over your concerns, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the top few issues that we've talked about were infrastructure, violence and crime in the community, and after-school programs of some type to help deal with the crime problems and problems with our youth, which are our future. So if we can all work together to deal with the issues in our community and in District 6 that have kind of plagued us for years, we can begin to go back to the original intent of single-member districting. which was to address the issues of that particular community by the representative that is representing, uh, each district separately, which does not, did not exist before 1980. So my commitment is to do exactly what the original intent of creating single-member districts are and was at that time, and work towards the solutions and concerns of all people in District Six, not just some, but all people in District Six, and help build the infrastructure that's needed to solve problems that you are concerned about, the residents. Thank you.
Mr. Burns?
Yes, well, thank you. Uh, and it's been a pleasure for me to serve, uh, as the city commissioner for District Six. I was, uh, sworn in in, uh, January of 2020. Soon after that, the pandemic hit and the murder of George Floyd happened. Uh, so I had a hundred-day plan, uh, but we had to put that on the shelf and really pivot to meeting, helping some of our community members meet some of the basic needs of, of, you know, testing, food and, and things of that nature. But during that time, what it allowed me to do was truly, truly hone in and develop a plan to address a lot of the things that I heard when I was on the campaign trail. We, uh, so I, I'd like to just share a few things that, uh, I would like the, uh, residents of District Six to judge me on is my record. You know, we look at, um, all the activity that has happened. I mentioned the $500,000 that was secured for the 21st Century Learning Center at the James R. Smith Center. But also, uh, the, the residents of the Prince Hall community came to me about a park that they had been promised for 50 years. Uh, in June of 2020, I made that a campaign promise of mine. In June of this year, we cut the, we cut the ribbon on a brand-new developed Prince Hall Park. Our, our community members over off of Hidden Beach and Conroy, uh, made note to, of me of a very, very uh, dangerous intersection where they had been fighting for a traffic light for 17, and somebody said 30 years. I worked with our county commissioner, uh, of that district, and now we have a traffic light that I understand is fully operational as of yesterday. Also, I've been fighting for affordable housing. We have, uh, two affordable housing developments coming up. One senior affordable housing that will happen on the corner of Bruton and Columbia Street, uh, behind the Masonic Lodge, where we have 120 affordable units for, uh, for, for seniors. But also I ordered the cleanup of this city's Piedmont Boxyard, which held all of the, the city's dumpsters wasn't maintained. I ordered the cleanup of that. We moved that box yard for, and now we will be putting 50 to 70 affordable units on that property. So I asked the, the residents of, uh, District Six to judge me by, by record. It would be a pleasure for me to continue to serve in this capacity. And I just don't talk about it. I make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you both for joining us. We wish you the best of luck and, um, I look forward to hearing more about this race.